That clock, because that clock is immense. So we will get started here. I'd like to introduce Lester Williams. Wes has been a resident of Grafton for fifty-seven years, moving here in nineteen sixty-seven. Wes raised his family here and was employed mostly in factory work, retiring from Rexmore here in Grafton. Wes is a Korean Army veteran and was stationed in Japan during the Korean conflict nineteen fifty-two to nineteen fifty-four, where he was part of the Army Signal Group. He's a member of Rose Harms American Legion, where he served as the post chaplain for fifteen years. Right, we've asked Wes to come in tonight and as part of our program to recognize folks who have served our village. We'd like him to say the Pledge of Allegiance, so I understand you got a couple of words to say before you do that.
Yes, thank you very much. When I first moved to Grafton, this marvelous building wasn't even on the drawing board at that time. Most of the land around us was strictly agricultural. Couple miles east or miles southeast was a interchange, a highway interchange, which was affectionately called the Pretzel. I don't know if anybody remembers that. On a Friday morning, you kind of held your breath until you found your way through it. And down in the village itself, on the outskirts, Grafton State Bank put up the first and only high-rise in town. And up on the top end of Second Avenue, there were, a new church went up. The Lime Film, at that time, was the site of the village dome. I remember going out there many times. And out on the highway was Schmitz Pavilion. And his, I guess, host of a small cabin, rental cabins. But that's about all there was, as far as I could see at that time. You, you remember that, that song, Come on Light My Fire? It was about that time down in Milwaukee, they were rioting and they were actually burning that's the town down there trying to. And it was just about that time that the I forty-three was completed as far as Grafton. And that, my understanding was the beginning of the boom of Grafton. And in the years following, Grafton Village grew with leaps and bounds. My own family, we kind of kept up with it. I had three daughters, all went to twelve years of high school and grade school in the village of Grafton, various schools throughout the town. Later on, my wife, they and I worked at the election polls for twenty years. And it was mentioned, I, I've done the American Legion post for fifty-five years. I was the post chaplain for fifteen years. And sadly, over the years, prayers have been, well, not exactly, well, what shall I say? At public meetings, I don't know why this happened, but it did. And I remember ten years ago, I got a parking ticket and I was upset. But I, I mailed my ten dollar fine in and that was it. On the way here tonight, it, it came upon me that this is the first time I've been to a board meeting in Grafton. And suddenly I realized that people here and those that went before you have, have done just an excellent job in taking care of the citizens of, of Grafton. And with all that being said, it is true honor for me to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, Wes.
Wonderful, thank you very much, sir, I appreciate yours. Thank you kindly.
All right. Carmen, I think you've got everybody locked here who's here at the meeting. We'll go on to the minutes, we'll look for the approval of the September third twenty twenty-four village board meeting and filing the June fifth twenty twenty-four committee of health authority. The July ninth twenty twenty-four public safety committee meeting, the August twelfth twenty twenty-four board of public work meetings as presented. Before I say that though, I know, um, Chris, you did notice a challenge with the public safety committee meeting minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm sure we will be working with Amy on those corrections at the next meeting. Are you satisfied with that?
Yep, we'll correct it before we file it or we're filing.
We'll file it and then we'll correct it.
Okay.
Correct? Okay, well, tell you what we'll do, let's correct it, let's get the public safety committee meeting minutes right now. We'll get them corrected and bring them back. I think that'll work. Lisa, do you have a?
I, I was, I didn't see the draft minutes from public safety for our review. Katie sends them out.
They were out.
They were, were they? Okay, that I mean, thanks.
Yeah, we can get a copy for it if you'd like, those I can send.
No, that's okay, it's gonna be my email somewhere.
Any other discussion on the minutes here? Motion in second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in second, any further discussion on the minutes?
So to be clear, the motion does not include the public safety.
That is correct, motion for approval of the meeting minutes exception, July ninth twenty twenty-four. Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Kirsten's request may be heard on an agenda or non-agenda items. Please come up, state your name.
Hi, everybody, my name is Bill Harbeck, I think you know that, but my address is nine oh seven Seventeenth Avenue. First, I know, I only have two minutes to talk. Given the discussion by, I didn't catch his last name, Les. My first comment is, I think citizens should be allowed more than two minutes, if other, like they are other committees. So relatively recent rule change. This is important for people to get their views out, and this is the highest board meeting. So why not give people more time? That's, that's my first comment, it's irrelevant to my second comment. The second is the term limits issue, which I'm not allowed to speak to during the term limits topic, which I think is not sensible. I think I should be able to speak and citizens should be able to speak during that timeframe. Why is this back here? It requires a super majority to put it into effect. At the first village board meeting, three people said, they weren't inclined, four people were, maybe we'll think about it. Three people said no, super majority is five, we only had three. I should have put the end to it, put an end to it, it didn't, it should. My third comment is relating to the report on this. I found it curious, the report by our administrator said, very few municipalities in Wisconsin have adopted a term limits rule. And then it lists four out of five municipalities have adopted a term on this, term limits rule. What happened to Port Washington, what happened to Slockville, Village in Town, what happened to the town of Metwon? All of the surrounding communities, other than that, the city of Metwon, were non-term limits. I wasn't in that, in the report, that should have been the emphasis of the report. Rather than listing four out of five that were in favor, Green Bay, Water Towns. But it's all over the place now, thank you. My, my fourth point on this is, if it ain't broken, fix it. We don't have a problem here with term limits. How many of you have been on the board for more than five years?
Barely. I don't, don't, uh, number one, do not lecture me on what I've done and what I've not, okay?
Thanks.
So please complete your, your.
Thank you. Very few, we're not, nobody here is on the board that would be subject to the term limit requirement, other than one person.
And what is your relationship to her?
And, I mean, for the record, and the relationship. Don't get personal with me. You know the relationship, she is my husband.
I'm making it to the record, make the point and finish up your comment.
I'm doing that. She's the target. A voter theoretically raised this point. A voter who obviously was dissatisfied with the election results. There's a way to get people on the board that you don't want to be on the board, off the board, that's through elections. Let the people decide who they want to be on the board.
Thank you, thank you. All right. All right. No business presented by the president at this time to resolution ordinance as action items, consideration of insurance claim nine seventy-one fourteenth avenue.
Absolutely, this is coming directly to the village board with a recommendation for denial from the finance committee. Due to the timeliness of making, following up on the claim that was filed by American Family Insurance in subrogation of the overall claim. That being said, the claim itself, as outlined in the IFC, is based upon a water meter installation. A pipe leakage that occurred as a follow-up to, whether directly related to or not, is undetermined. That being said, because, primarily because of the nature of subrogation in this case, whereby the insurance company is looking to be made whole, not the resident. The resident has been made whole based upon their coverage through American Family. This is a claim filed by American Family, looking for funds from the village. That being said, it was discussed at the finance committee earlier this evening, and a recommendation for denial has been forwarded to the village board.
I'll be looking for a motion in second for recommend denial of the claim of American Family Insurance regarding nine seventy-one fourteenth avenue. Motion in second, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any discussion on this item?
Yeah, just a question. When we last talked about this process for claims, there was some discussion about we would get a written refusal or denial from our new carrier. Did that ever occur, did we get something written?
Yep, that was right in the, that was actually written into the IFC, that the quote from Miss De Frans, from Cities of, Allison De Frans, from Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, quote, "I have reviewed all claim documentation, the village confirms Mr. Raker's water meter was changed out, but the plumbing to the meter where the leaking actually occurred is the homeowner's responsibility to maintain. It is my opinion that there was no negligence of the part of the village, and it is my recommendation that this claim be denied." So that came directly from our carrier.
Did that come in a paper document, or was that something that she said on the phone?
I believe that came by email, Paul.
Oh, so it was something that said that, or this is the telephone conversation that we used to have? Oh, okay. And I think the only other question I had was, this just looks like a general claim form from the homeowner, is that right, Jesse? I mean, or is this what we got sent from?
It's from American Family Insurance.
Okay, to us, just make me think.
Just for the record, I think you're referring to the nowhere supply.
Yes. Yep, that's it.
Anyone else? Give you the motion in second for denial of this claim, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and then motion carries. All right, we'll go to the, report of the board of public works, approved Strand Associates design alternative three for the upgrades to the Ninth Avenue lift station. And so the associated sanitary infrastructure to accommodate current and future developments.
I'll provide a very high level introduction, we do have Director Thomas, Assistant Director Greece, and then Isaac from Strand and Associates with us online, to be able to speak to any particulars. That being said, the Board of Public Works reviewed a very intensive report that was commissioned through Strand and Associates, Associates to identify lift station and associated sanitary infrastructure upgrades that would be needed to accommodate the development on the west northwest side of the village. In essence, how do we get the flowage being created by that new development from point A, north, the west northwest side, to point B, the, the treatment plan, and all points in between? That being said, Strand took a very comprehensive look at the overall situation, the development trends, the existing infrastructure, and came forward with multiple design options. That being said, Design Alternative Three, which includes upgrades to the Ninth Avenue Lift Station and Associated Sanitary Infrastructure, has been forwarded to the village board for approval. What this action will look to do is solidify the village's intent and course of action with regards to engineering and design to make sure that the public infrastructure best serves the villages, the village as a whole, as far as accommodating the new development on the west northwest side of the village and all points in between. If we undersize any part of this, that can cause surcharges and or backflows into existing areas of the village. So we need to make sure we take a very comprehensive look, hence the commissioned project with Strand, to ensure that we look to establish and move forward over time. Mind you, this isn't a one-year project, this will be a series of projects over time to ensure that the flows are able to get from point A to point B, as, as I'm kind of summarizing here, very high level, in an appropriate, cost-efficient manner. We recognize, staff, we staff recognize that our recommendation to the Board of Public Works, with regard, regards to Design Alternative Three is not the most expensive, nor is it the cheapest. However, we do recognize and feel very strongly that it best serves the community to avoid long-term issues with regards to ensuring proper flowage. With that, as I mentioned, we've got Director Thomas, Assistant Director Greece, and then Isaac from Strand with us as well, to be able to speak to particulars of the project and the results thereof.
Okay, we'll take a motion directly under village board approval of Strand Associates Design Alternative Three for the upgrades to the Ninth Avenue Lift Station and Associated Sanitary Infrastructure to accommodate current and future developments, bring it for discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
A second.
The motion in second, questions?
Administrator advised the, what, what is, I understand that this is the preliminary and from the information that, that I have read and, and listened to, it's, it's in, we're gonna move forward with creating more extensive engineering and then moving forward, it's kind of been phases to, to cap, to spread out this large capital project. What is the, like, what is the initial funding source for the, the engineering design?
Certainly, being utility projects, it would be either funded through the utility itself and/or charges back to the developer. So it'd be a combination of funding sources. There may be debt service associated as projects are carried out, but it would be solely through the utility because these are sanitary sewer-related projects. But again, there may be charges back to developers based upon the amount they're adding to the system and the need for upgrades, so it'd be a combination of funding sources.
Rick, could you just generally give us, very general, the cost of nine, one, two, and three? And then my other question is, have we ever done any types of work under any railroad tracks in the past?
Yeah, I can just say in the village, the person that comes to mind of the railroad tracks was the lumberyard development. Had to have sanitary area done underneath the railroad. And I have quite a sense of experience working with the railway in past jobs. Well overdesigned, scared how deep would require them, obviously. Omaha, it's probably six to nine months for every single material to get approved. Other example was, we sent, we saw that headwinds is adjacent to the railroad tracks. Very expensive, prior to my coming. The others concerned about the railroad tracks, just as I don't, if we have a horse name that goes under that railroad track, whenever we need to maintenance, we need to collaborate with the railroad.
Sure.
So if we go adjacent to it, we would not need that extensive collaboration.
Okay, sure.
And so you wanted to know.
Yeah, just general, just a general.
All right, alternative one was seven point five million. Alternative two was four point nine seven million. Alternative three was five point eight four billion. And alternative four was six point three seven billion.
Okay, and those are obviously what we anticipate, but we know that when this finally happens, it's gonna be more for either of those. Well, it's, it's gonna be years down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then motion carries. Number two, enter into contractual agreement with Piper Electric Incorporated, New Berlin, Wisconsin, providing electrical service upgrade services in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars, Jesse.
Absolutely, just simply bringing forward a contract with a not to exceed amount with it for electrical service upgrade. Director Thomas can speak more to the specific project. Or, my apologies, Assistant Director Greece.
Well, five shares from electric source with our automobile lift station. It is our last utility-owned transformer and pole. In the last three years, we've been called out during storms because we've lost power. We have to call people to come in, it's never good conditions, it's always in the middle of the night to come and help us fix it. So we invented this year to eliminate our, our ownership of this utility-owned transformer. So the first step is to convert the actual service of the well building so that we energies can then come and put their transformer at our property. So this is the contract for that extension of service or new service within the well building. At the same time, in order to do this, the lift station has to have some electrical work done so that we can put a generator on it while we're switching over the electrical service. It also gives us redundancy in a storm. If the lift station goes down, if we've been able to power it and hopefully not have any backups.
Okay, we need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then motion carries. Number three, resolution accepting and dedicating sanitary sewer water main, storms or asphalt roadway binder, curb and gutter, and sidewalk for final plat of Shady Hollow Phase Six subdivision, Village of Grafton, Wasawee County, Wisconsin, Jesse.
Yep, a housekeeping resolution, accepting public infrastructure within the final plat of Shady Hollow Phase Six here in the village of Grafton. This is a matter of formally accepting it by the, this infrastructure as public infrastructure by the village of Grafton.
Motion in second, please.
Motion approved.
A second.
Yes, offer motions.
All up.
Let me start that, okay?
All right.
Take a, take an offer, Andy.
I want to approve. A second.
Offer motion in second, any further discussion on this? Favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Authorization of purchase for custom build for twenty twenty-four, five cubic yard, yard dump truck, chassis from Truck Equipment Incorporated, Green Bay, Wisconsin, for the amount to exceed one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars, Jesse.
A capital co-in purchase for the Department of Public Works for an amount not to exceed the amount listed.
Okay, need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in second, discussion, questions?
Second.
Oh, what's that?
You just, it was just a motion.
There was a motion in a second. Did you hear the second? Okay, motion, who made the motion?
I just, Armstrong.
Motion in second.
Second.
Motion in second, discussion, questions?
I'd just like to make a comment on that, I mean, we have the truck, without filling it out, that truck is useless to us, so.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Report of Public Service Committee authorized the chief of police to work collaboratively with Wisconsin Department of Transportation to conduct, to conduct a speed and traffic analysis on Highway sixty, Washington Street, from I forty-three West to Wisconsin Avenue.
Yes, absolutely, Chief Capenera came to me with an opportunity to work with the state of Wisconsin on doing a traffic study along Highway sixty. And while that is a fantastic idea, that did not necessarily need board or commission review or approval, I thought it important to come through the public safety committee, and I asked chief to do so, shepherd that through public safety committee to the village board. Because, A, this is a very important project, B, I'd like it publicly known that we're working, looking to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation on this, and there may be some reimbursements back with associated costs. So that being said, that would necessitate formal action. Therefore, this is coming to the village board out of the public safety committee with a positive recommendation to carry out this project. The media got a little bit ahead of us on that, but that being said, tonight would be the formal action to move forward with that program.
Very good, thank you, Jesse, you need a motion in a second to bring to discussion, authorizing, authorizing the chief of police to work collaboratively with Wisconsin Department of Transportation to conduct a speed and traffic analysis on Highway sixty, from I forty-three West to Wisconsin Avenue.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Second motion here, or second item here is authorizing chief of police to apply for a no-match training grant offered through the Wisconsin Department of Justice in the amount of forty thousand one hundred ten dollars and eight cents.
In accord with policy, a grant of this amount to apply for it would require authorization. That said, while it is a significant grant, it is no match, therefore there would be no funds needed from the village of Grafton to be a part of that program. That being said, it is coming forward with a positive recommendation to have the chief move forward with an application for a very significant training grant through the Department of Justice.
Very good, thank you, Jesse, you motion in second to bring it to the table for discussion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in second, questions? Yes, Lisa.
Chief, do you have any specific ideas for this grant, if you get it? Anything special for the officers?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a specific leadership training grant, and it's a program that's offered through a warrior training program, they're the same company that buys leadership training for the Wisconsin National Guard. And it, it's hosted, they do, not just the training, but one-on-one counseling and coaching with upper man and rising stars, and not just in my department, but at the regional, because there would be twenty-five spots open for this training. So yeah, it's, it's certainly geared toward self-betterment as well as becoming a better communicator, being more transparent with the public, learning how to bridge that gap between the community and the police departments.
Kind of a match up from some of the other basic training that the officers would get.
Yeah, that's correct, so these offer life skills, training, coaching, counseling, one-on-one sessions, which is what the majority of the cost is, because there's so much traveling back and forth for the instructors.
Okay. And just that clarification, once the grant is completed, do you, does it go to the administrator just for final approval before you submit it?
Uh, yeah, so it's gotta go through the grant committee for final approval, but we had to come to the board even to get permission to take it to the grant committee.
Yep.
Anyone else, questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Lastly, with report of public safety committee approved, the acceptance of a donation of one hundred dollars from the Plus Group Wealth Advisors LLC to the Grafton Police Department.
Certainly, in accord with the village policy, formal adoption, or excuse me, formal acceptance of a donation from the Plus Group Wealth Advisors to the Grafton Police Department is here with a recommendation to accept.
Okay, very good, motion in a second.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then motion carries. Okay, let's talk about term limits.
Certainly, this is brought back on the agenda because earlier this year, a request was made for an agenda item to review the topic. Some very introductory information was. Some very introductory uh information was presented with regards to some historical context and whatnot. That being said, um a a general direction for some further research was requested. We are here with um that uh those results of that research. Um apologies if my IFC uh was confusing in any way, however. Following a statewide inquiry through my City Managers Association as well as a cursory search um on the web. I only found a handful of term limits. It wasn't a matter of focusing on the term limits, this is all that I found following a statewide inquiry. That being said, listed here, City of Green Bay, City of Fond du Lac, City of Watertown, City of Cedarburg, and the City of Mequon. Um City of Mequon discussed the topic but took no action at that time. The City of Cedarburg does have term limits, as does Watertown, Fond du Lac, and Green Bay. Green Bay, it should be noted per a uh Green Bay Press Gazette article that I read. Um did go through a referendum process to establish those um term limits as listed there. That being said, the historical look back at how the Village of Grafton has approached term limits shows that in nineteen ninety five, the village adopted a charter ordinance that established term limits. Um that being said, uh then in two thousand eight, the Village of Grafton adopted a new charter ordinance repealing the term limits. Currently, the village does not have any. If the Village Board wishes to pursue this topic further than where we are at today with regards. Excuse me, with regards to an informational update and um how. What's out there with regards to other communities that were uh found via a statewide survey? That would require a change in term limits would require a charter ordinance, as previously noted. A charter ordinance requires a favorable vote by two thirds of the members elect of the Village Board in order to pass. They do not take effect immediately. Um that being said, a charter ordinance is subject to a request for a referendum, so the board has a choice. The board may either take up the charter ordinance itself, or the board may put a charter ordinance question uh on a public referendum. So that being said, uh that, those are the options if the Village Board wishes to um look into this matter further. As far as either dealing with it directly or putting it to the public. Um I don't have any formal action requested, however, I would simply ask direction of staff as far. Is there further research that is required or what course of action um so I can plan uh my workload accordingly?
Very good, thank you Jesse, and just for uh the record, um there has been a request that could initial discussion of this matter. It was requested to be brought amongst the board by several trustees, so in respect to. Those trustees who requested this be brought up again, um there was no resolution of that in the first time and we said we would look into it. And bring it back at a later date, and that's where we are right now. So um what we're kind of looking here is we're looking for a uh general consensus amongst the board here. On um whether we would want to have this voted in a two thirds. Or maybe we allow the people of Grafton to make the decision of the referendum. When this decision was repealed in two thousand eight, as I understand, this was adopted by the Village Board. I'm not sure of the public input that took place, however, um you know, at this point in time, I think we can uh ask the board to discuss. If we want to go forward with this, if you do not want to go forward with this. However, if we want to go forward, we would have to determine whether it just be a charter ordinance uh through a two thirds vote. Or through a uh referendum that could potentially be put in place for, um I would think um. Mike, I think we're looking for potentially for on April of two thousand twenty five.
I think so, it's too early or it's too late to be on a November agenda, oh ballot.
Okay, so a little bit discussion here.
Uh pardon me, Mr. President, if I may add one more item which I did not cover in my uh presentation. A paper copy of an email that was sent to the Village Board from a resident regarding their thoughts and opinions on term limits. Um was provided to the board, um you should have also received that electronically as well. Um that being said, the email um just really spoke to historical context and um how that particular resident. Um um felt about uh term limits.
Okay, very good, anybody wish to start the discussion on this?
Um I'm against term limits. With all due respect, Mr. Roder. Your petition was, I think in nineteen ninety four. Oh, almost thirty years ago. So. I think it's a little dated, quite honestly. If. If one of us up here wants to continue to serve. We run for election and or reelection. And then the citizens of the village either vote to keep us on the board. Or vote someone else to be on the board. So to me, term limits really doesn't apply. It applies more to the citizens, not to us. We should let the citizens decide who's serving that. And as far as a referendum is concerned. Which is, sounds like an option possibly. What are we looking at for dollar wise there for a referendum if we wanted to? Have a referendum.
Uh so long as it's not a special election, it would just be part of the um. Um the customary election costs that we budget for. Staff would prepare the question in accord with feedback and formal action by the Village Board. Um so that's a covered cost, so to speak, and really, I guess it would be a matter of whether or not. Any sort of public information session would be directed, I guess those those could be costs. But um outside of a special election, I uh there really would not be any substantial additional costs borne by the village.
Any else, Jim?
Uh that's it for now, but reserve the right to add something later.
Of course, anybody else want to speak, Mary Poppins?
Um I am a fan of term limits, I think it's a good idea, I think it's helping for uh for the village. Um and contrary to Phil's belief, this is not a target on any single person on this board. You can run for, you can be on the board for eight years, take a year off and run for another eight years. Um I would be a fan of seeing it go to referendum and let the, let our citizens decide whether they want term limits on the board or not.
Anything else, Mary Poppins? Else, wish to speak?
I have a comment.
No, thank you, David.
Um I'm in favor of uh term limits and I believe. Or my opinion is that I think all branches of government should have term limits, I don't care if it's that the village level all the way up to uh national government. Uh some people come in, uh I mean, as we see with 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 cut, with our country, we've had senators and that have been there far too long. I'm not saying that we have anybody here that's been here too long, but it's good to have new blood brought into the bill, so get fresh ideas brought in. I've been here two years, or com- coming up on two years and um but there'll become a point in time where, you know, if somebody. You know, would like to come on here and I'm I'm titled to run, if there's no opponent, I believe I could still run under this platform. Um otherwise, if somebody else after my eight years. They want to run against me, well then I back out and God bless, so you know, get get some new blood in here.
Thank you, David.
Um I think it's a good idea for us to have term limits, I think it allows for fresh ideas, um new opinions. It allows us to provide leadership um amongst the community. Um and I think us being appointed and or elected and paid positions, I think we should remove ourselves from deciding this. So I think it should go to referendum.
Um I'm kind of in Jim's camp on this one, I'm not a real big fan of term limits. Uh in the sense that uh the voters are the ultimate decision maker as to whether or not someone up here is doing a good job. And should continue in that. Uh I think that the individuals that are running for elections. Uh should be actually doing some sort of self evaluation to say, number one, am I effective? Uh number two, is my time passed and past the torch, they have to. Understand that that needs to take place as well, you, this is not a, this is not a a lifetime job and this is not something that. Uh although you are paid as a votes trustee, it's not something you're making a million dollars off of, uh nor do I want it to ever be that, so. Um I would be not in favor of term limits. But if we were going to continue and and say that we're going to move forward with the opportunity to do that, I would say that I'm. Uh very much in favor of the voters making that decision as far as a referendum. And then moving forward, and then the only other comment I have is the the. Years in of service and that year off. That you're making a comment about, that is also up as for an option because that was just happened to be the model that was in place previously. So we could choose, it could be three two year terms, it could be two two year terms, it could be anything that we wanted to be. That we would put to a referendum, so I just want to make sure that that's understood that. That number is also a number that would need to be examined rather than just saying those numbers out loud, so, thank you.
Um so I am not in favor of term limits. I think that citizens get involved when they may have a passion, when they may um. You know, want to try something new, they may want to experience local government, which is something I think we've all done. And had some good times and some bad. Um I think that if citizens would like to run, I think they should. I don't necessarily think that term limits is the answer because um. You may get somebody who doesn't necessarily really want to do it. They may not be invested, I think uh in the past, we have had some elections with three people running for three spots. We've had five people running for three spots. Um and I think it gives people. I think they're more invested, maybe when there's five people running, um they might become more educated on the topics. Um they, you know, I think it's a good thing to have a lot of people running. But I do, I don't believe that we need term limits, I think some of us who've been up here a while. Um have put our heart and soul into it and um I'm not sure I would feel about a referendum. Um I think the citizens already decide because they do elect us and they're the ones in the end who already chosen us.
Thank you, uh on this point, I I would be uh for term limits and I would also on not. I would think that um we certainly trust. Our electorate to decide if we are appropriate for our positions, yet. Not letting them to decide whether we need, whether or not we need term limits, um I think we. Could potentially talk out of both sides of our mouth saying, yes. We want, we want you to elect us, but we want to be able to determine our term limits, I think there's a a conflict there. Um I I would be in favor of um having Jesse go ahead and draft a referendum question. Um to determine what those term limits would be and certainly at that time, we could discuss. Um options, if in fact, we uh are in consensus that that would be the right thing to do, we could discuss. Term limits in in a matter of, is it three terms, four terms? Is it different for the trustees than it is for the village president, um and how much time would be taken off in between? So um I believe what we have here is um, uh I know Jim, you're against. Um you're against, you're against, so that's uh four, three here. Um I think if we go referendum, I think we have one, two, three, four, five for referendum potentially. So and that would be five to two consensus for referendum, Jesse.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm understanding, the 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 direction to staff, my myself as the village administrator would be to. Um by consensus, um craft a referendum question to be brought back to the Village Board. Or consideration, basically all the terms and conditions of that referendum question, um I I can start with. Uh my plan right now is I sit and literally I'm throwing spaghetti against the wall, um kind of brainstorming as I sit. Uh more likely what you're going to see back then, if this, assuming this is the direction that that. Plays out, I'm going to bring back a referendum question that will look very similar to what the terms were. Initially back in um nineteen ninety five. Um.
I think that would be very.
And then the Village Board can discuss from there as to what that shape looks like for to reach a final referendum question. And the Village Board would also look to um take action on the timing of that referendum question as well.
That would be fun. Okay.
Dan, Dan, can I ask a question?
I will move on to turn on to update on the American Rescue Plan ARPA twenty twenty one. I am moving forward, I may have you removed your, Mr. Harbeck, I don't want to do that, but you are interrupting this meeting as you have. And I'm asking you to not participate. Sir, I'm not answering your question that was presented here. This is what the consensus of the board is, I thank you very much for being here, moving on to update of American Rescue Plan ARPA of twenty twenty one.
Uh back in twenty twenty one, the uh federal government uh released uh funds uh to communities uh throughout the nation. And looking to uh stimulate uh stimulate the growth and um projects throughout the um nation. That being said, over the years, the village has adopted an ongoing and running list of projects and then associated expenditures. This evening, uh myself and Director Stodhar are here to provide an update as to. The um usage of the one point two million dollars of ARPA funds that were allocated to um, excuse me. The ARPA funds that were allocated to the village uh through the federal government and where we stand today. Um that being said, there is one update to the project list, our project list on the second page does show a um. Lime kiln in the parking lot uh paving project for this year. Uh we received word after the packet was published that Ozaki County is not able to meet that. Um this year, they would look to move us to next spring, um that being said. We will have to take a look at that because if conditions are unfavorable in spring, that puts us in jeopardy of hitting the deadline with regards to expensing. This, these dollars, um that being said, uh the Lime Kiln Park uh parking lot paving project. Does remain on the radar, so to speak, and it is something we want to accomplish, we will at staff level have to continue monitoring that. And because again, of that timing factor that I just mentioned, but I wanted to make the board aware that Lime Kiln Park Parking Lot Repaving. Um is not going to happen in twenty twenty four, again, due to the uh time constraints of the um county. Uh paving crew that we were looking to partner with, um all of the other uh projects listed there for twenty twenty four. Um are either complete or scheduled to be completed um this year.
The projects have to be approved by December thirty first, one twenty four, so they have that, they have to be completed by June the thirty of twenty twenty five. So we'll talk, we'll, then the type posts today, we'll talk with APW. Um if that project looks like it will be completed by June of twenty twenty five, you all got to find out the project, put it back to the board.
So I have clear understanding, we that's, we, if we do not have. This plan by December thirty first, we will lose the funding for that, correct? Okay, identified to different project, however, um we don't have commitment, a firm commitment from the county that they will get this done before. Um uh what's the date, on May thirty first? June thirtieth, so um. That puts us in jeopardy of losing the funding.
We'll come back, if it looks like it, they will come back, they will know the project.
Reminder, it's got delayed, the village's survey equipment is not working, so it's supposed to kind of survey out. Um county is looking hopefully if what our laws and facts over get our downtown parking lot, it's not part of our book. And then I'm working with them currently right now is to revise prices, so we took us a lot in for the spring.
So if the county can't get to it, is there any way we could try to get better by a private company?
We could, absolutely could, yep, that's absolutely an option.
Okay, any other questions for Jesse on this? Right. On the village administrator's report.
Just a few items for the Village Board here this evening, hydrant flushing is scheduled to begin at the end of this month and finish up around mid October. Uh per usual practice, the flushing will be advertised in print and online, this is part of the uh. Uh maintenance program that the utility carries out just to ensure that A, the uh hydrants are operating appropriately, but then also just to flush. Um out the uh water mains is just simply good practice to avoid any sedimentation. Uh fall and winter swimming lessons uh being offered by our park and recreation department for the first time in many years. Uh this is, we will be utilizing the Grafton High School pool. And this is a part of the latest um park uh and recreation program that is out there now and program registration is open. That being said, so far the winter registration for this uh new offering, or we'll call it a new offering, it has been quite some time since we've offered this. Uh has been filling up very quickly with very good response for the fall session that is being offered. Uh, has been filling up very quickly with very good response for the fall session that is being offered as well. And really what's helping to make this possible is the um staffing availability to be able to run these programs, and so we're pretty excited about. This, this, being able to bring this offering back and the excitement within the community of signing up for it and really looking to take advantage of that new offering. Uh, last but not least, uh, we've got uh, uh, the ballots for the November election were delivered to the clerk's office uh late last week. That being said, the mailing of the absentee ballots uh to those who have requested them will start later this week, and then we will. Um, as in the past, schedule in-person absentee voting um as appropriate and advertise that as well, making sure the public is well aware of. All of the election rules and regulations associated with absentee balloting, and then we just look forward to the November election, so. That is my update for the board.
Thank you, Jesse, let's move on to licenses, uh, approval to issue operator license, we have none. Look for a motion to approve issuance of Class A alcohol license to him at Dylan Agent for Station sixty LLC. Doing business at Station sixty, eleven eighty-five Port Washington Road for the period ending June twenty, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, motion in a second, please.
A second.
Motion in second, uh, Jesse, uh, any discussion on this, I think this is uh due to the sale of the city.
Simply a new owner taking the licensure, yep.
You got any questions? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries, uh, similarly, approval of issuance of cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device license. Two minute Dylan Agent Station sixty LLC doing business at Station sixty, eleven eighty-five Port Washington Road for the period ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five, motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any discussion on this? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, connection carries. Uh, reported bills, approval of village expenditures, one million seventy thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and seventy-four cents. You can see some uh questions back and forth, asked and answered, any other discussions on this before, let's do a motion, and a second, move to the table.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion in second, are any discussion of this at all, um, Lisa?
Uh, yeah, I just had a general question, um, I did see a bill for um. A legal firm for contract negotiations for police services. Um, just wondering if at some point maybe the board could get an update on that.
Yes, we actually will be kicking off contract negotiations tomorrow with our initial offer to the uh police union and hearing their counter initial offer. Um, that being said, at a certain point when we get to a uh tentative agreement, that is brought forward to the village board uh to review in closed session as to what the new terms are. And uh, a- any um, uh, anything that goes along with them, so that will absolutely be reviewed with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you very much.